We only have a couple more items. We should be able to get through this pretty quickly. But we did finish up with that discussion, both items 5C and 5D. So we'll just move on to public participation, Section 6. And I don't believe we have any other blue cards in the room, but just wanted to check and make sure before we move on. Doesn't look like it. So we'll just move straight on to Section 7, the action items. And the first one up is 7A, the approval of personnel items. So Board members, I need a motion for the approval of personnel items. So move. Moved by Dr. Dorsey, seconded by Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Lockard.
Okay, Board members, for your approval as part of the agenda packet, we have three items, three personnel action items, two new hires. I'm sorry, it's one item with, I'm going to outline what it is. Two new hires, one release from contract, two leaves of absences, as detailed in the agenda packet.
Board members, any questions or comments? We will note that it's a little disappointing that we're losing a 29-year veteran to the...
Another county even a promotional opportunity. Yes, it is, very much.
Right. But like you said, it is a big promotional opportunity for her. Right? All right. Board members, any other questions or comments?
Just to pop off the note, it's good to see a former student on the list, so as a new hire.
Oh, really? Okay. Great. Which one would that be?
Number one.
Number one. Great. So it's always good to have people stay within the county.
And choose teaching as a profession.
That's right.
Good.
All right. With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It passes unanimously. Thank you. And we'll move on to the award of bids. Board members, I need a motion for the approval of the award of bids.
So move.
Moved by Ms. Pataglia.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kyler. Dr. Lockard.
Okay, Board members, there are three items here. I will explain them for our sort of a summary, and then we'll take questions and comments. The three items, the first is a continuation of the bidirectional amplifier project in our schools. As you're aware, this has been a priority of your Security Advisory Council, especially with the creation and expansion of the Sheriff's SRO program. When available, we supplement the funding of this project with state grant money. And so you might recall at our October board meeting, we approved a capital budget adjustment of $536,000 from the Maryland Public Schools Construction Program, School Safety Grant Program. And we used those grant funds to offset this project. Secondly, there's an approval of bids for musical instruments. These are the purchasing guides schools use when they need to add or replace musical instruments. And finally, there's approval of the award of paper supplies for the school system for the next six-month period with the option for further renewal periods.
Board members, any questions? So Dr. Lockard, the $242,000, is that for item number one? Is that completely covered by the grant money? Or do we have something that comes out of capital for that?
John. So that amount would be more than covered by the recent adjustment. But the project over time, which is multi-year, it's not been a complete offset from the state. I think in the first year of the grant, they did about half. They matched, it was a matching... It was a matching, I think, about half of the first year or so. We're now in the second, I guess, third and fourth phases. And so we're getting, we're using your local security account as we get the grant money from the state. We repopulate that account and use the money that way. So it's not been 100%, but it's been a decent portion of the overall project.
Okay. So we already have eight schools that are covered, right? And then we're adding four more.
Correct.
For this, and then we'll just keep adding them over time? Adding additional schools over time?
Right. Ray, I'll have exact numbers on how many remain, if any.
Okay.
I hope, since I've said that.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for raising the bar, John. Yeah, so we're at 13. I believe there's 10 additional schools that are left. Some schools tested okay. They didn't need any additional amplification to make the systems work. So we're at, we have 10 more. We have, we still have the security grant. For this year, we're still awaiting the parameters for making the request for those funds. And when we get that, that will go towards the project.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And Dr. Lockard, I just had a quick question about the paper award. So I'm assuming that this, the $333,000, that that's a number that's going down over time as we become a lot more digital, like our paper needs are going down. But I was kind of curious as to why only one of the vendors out of 14 that we, was it 14 that we went to?
Here comes our procurement specialist.
Good evening. Yes, paper prices are, or paper consumption is going down within the school because we have more stuff done online and digitally. Reason why we do not get a lot of people participating in our bids is because our bid requires delivery to the schools. And we don't require the schools to have a minimum. They can do a couple cases at a time. A lot of the other counties warehouse it, but there's a cost to warehousing. You have the space, you have the manpower, you have the trucks that are running. And we have found that, we have compared prices to other counties that do tractor trailers to their warehouse. And the cost doing it that way, it does not really offset the way we do it. We really do feel that this is the most efficient due to the fact that we don't have that much storage space either.
Right.
You know, we don't have an operating warehouse.
Okay. Well, my concern with only getting one bidder is that it's not cost-effective. But it sounds like it is because of all the other factors that come into play.
Because the other schools are not saving that much more per case on their paper prices over what we are. Part of the reason is that WB Mason is already in our schools. They have our stationary supply. They have a lot of our classroom supplies. They're in our schools every single day. So for them, this is not affecting the way that they do business. So that is why they are able to offer us the best price. I can compare prices with WB Mason to other counties that they don't service. We are getting a much better price because they're already there.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Pataglia.
You're welcome.
Board members, any other questions? Okay, then with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Board members, now I need a motion for the approval of the members for the ethics panel.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Kyler.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Pataglia. Dr. Lockard.
Okay, Board members, as required by state law, Board Policy BC Ethics establishes a Board of Education-appointed ethics panel. The panel consists of five members who serve staggered two-year terms. In accordance with the terms defined in the policy, I'm requesting that the board reappoint three existing panel members for another two-year term, which expires in January of '22.
I'm sorry. Can we name them? Did I get them?
Yeah, they're right here.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see. I'm sorry. Okay. Plus, we had already approved the other two.
Correct.
From last time. Okay.
Dr. Lockard, can you tell us, how often does this group meet? Is it only when there's a specific item for them to review?
Yeah, they don't meet on a regular schedule. They meet when there's something for them to review. They do meet at least every year so that they evaluate policy functioning. They also meet at least once every year for the sole purpose of reviewing all the financial disclosure forms that officials and elected officials and staff turn in under the ethics policy as well.
Okay.
So always at least twice, sometimes depending on the number of other requests, a few times more.
Okay. So are these three members that were recommending reappointment, they've been on for quite a while?
All of them for at least one term. A couple of them, I believe, for more than one term. I know at least one of them has been on for more than one term.
Okay. Board members, any other questions? Okay, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, and that concludes the action items. We have one item up under discussion, which is the Superintendent's Proposed FY '21 Operating Budget. Dr. Lockard.
Okay, Board members. First, I want to thank everybody, all of our community, parents and community members, schools, staff, all our folks here who have provided input, the town halls, the meetings that we've had, our work with county commissioners on a draft five-year budget plan. All of that work that we've been doing has been groundwork, really, to try to get to this first stage of the FY '21 budget that I'm bringing you tonight, the Superintendent's Proposed Operating Budget. So it's come with a lot of input, a lot of thought, a lot of feedback, a lot of connection to the work that you saw in the Pillar One strategic plan, as well as the rest of our strategic plan. So as I said, over those past, these past several months, we've taken, undertaken tremendous background and prep work for what I'm going to recommend for FY '21's operating budget. I know board members also participated in a lot of those town hall meetings, and certainly the discussions and input through board meetings and board work sessions. As I mentioned, parallel to that going on, we worked on a draft five-year operating budget plan modeled on the county's plan and based on our best understanding of future revenue and expenditures. So this draft version was already shared, and then later shared in a joint meeting with the commissioners, was reviewed. And we went ahead and incorporated that proposed five-year plan into the complete budget document, building five years off of this year's recommended budget. So all that preliminary work was designed, as I said, to lead to this first formal stage of the FY '21 operating budget process. Tonight's meeting, where I present to you my recommended FY '21 operating budget for your consideration. You'll take this recommended budget under consideration, gather additional feedback, and we'll outline the next couple important dates coming up for that. And then it's your February meeting, adopt your own FY '21 operating budget request, which will then be submitted to the commissioners. I'm going to ask Mr. Hartlove to present the figures to you. As the calendar has moved forward, we've been able to refine some of our estimates, and Mr. Hartlove will note those updates. That being said, it's still preliminary in the process, especially at the state level. We'll not have a clear picture of projected state funding until we're able to see the governor's budget released to the General Assembly. And even after that, it needs some analysis for us. However, for this update and my recommended FY '21 operating budget, we revised the projected state FY '21 revenue to become, to be more conservative in nature. Mainly, we've made revisions based on information we've received for CPI and per pupil wealth. For instance, last year, the state CPI on the foundation formula from the state was 2.54%. We don't believe at this time. It'll be as high as 2.54%. We still don't know exactly what it's going to be, but we're estimating a little bit lower to be conservative in our estimates. Also, preliminary per pupil wealth ranking we received just before the winter break. That indicates that our relative wealth as a county has increased, which in terms of the state funding formula could mean potentially less funding depending on the overall state wealth rankings. So again, we're still at a preliminary stage in the FY '21 budget process, but we've made revisions based on the best information we have now. As we all know, this is a process from start to finish. And so we are trying to do our best and put our best foot forward to give the best estimates in some places when we can. We'll know much more again as time goes on, starting with the governor's budget being released. Finally, in my recommended budget, I'm submitting a list of eight positions that I recommend be prioritized in FY '21 pending available funding. This reflects the work that many of you observed at our town hall meetings, as well as our conversations in work sessions and board meetings. And while this work is difficult, in other words, picking some priorities among many, I've tried to consider our system data, our strategic plan needs, staff recommendations, and of course, the feedback from our community. If I could do all things at once, you know I certainly would to meet the needs that we have and then some. Our fiscal reality is that we need to work on it by a year-to-year approach over time, being careful and deliberative about how we utilize the county's resources. This is my, this recommendation begins this annual process. And one of the prevailing themes of the town halls was to focus on special education needs. So we took that feedback, and a little bit later, we can have more conversation on this. But Mr. Anderson and Mr. Shockney, our Director of Special Education and Staff, have begun to reevaluate special ed staffing very carefully and concluded that by including the positions I'm recommending this evening, we believe we can make some significant inroads in the teacher workload and case management that have been, you know, very, that we've heard a lot about, that have been impacting our special education teachers and students in our schools. And so again, we'll be able to elaborate a little bit more on the work there. So, Mr. Hartlove, if you would take us through those numbers, and then we'll open it up for some questions. And then after that, I am going to follow up with a very brief CIP update for the board. We had said we're going to come back each month and give you some updates as we go, as we head into the spring. But for now, let's stick with the operating budget. Chris?
Thank you, Dr. Lockard. Good evening, Board members. Commissioner Weaver, tonight is our, we're presenting a highlight of the Superintendent's Proposed Fiscal Year 2021 Operating Budget. It's first formal step in the budget cycle. There we go. Did you do that or did I do that? All right. So we, what we're going to go over tonight is the, we're going to concentrate on the non-restricted budget, and in particular, estimates of revenue and expenditures. We're going to talk about next steps. And it's important to realize that it's an iterative process. So each iteration, we're looking to improve our estimates. We're looking to, we have better information. And as we have that information, we pass it on into that next step. So with that, we will start talking about revenues. So the county revenue, we're very pleased with the plan that was passed by the commissioners back in the spring. It includes an increase of 3.13 or 3.126%, depending on how you round it. It's, and it gives us a stream of revenue for five years at that percentage, which is very useful for us in planning. That equates to an increase of $6,166,080. So we're very thankful and supportive of the support we've gotten in the past, received in the past from the commissioners. And certainly, this plan goes a long way towards helping us operate the system going forward. So let's talk about state revenue now. And we have a little less guidance. Plenty of guidance when the county revenue, county revenue comes right out of the operating plan. State revenue, we don't have as much guidance on right now. So what we're doing is, is we are estimating an increase of 2.62%, which equates to an increase of $3.5 million. What's driving, the big driver on that is what Mr. Kane was discussing earlier, and that's our enrollment. Our enrollment is up this year. And because of that, and that's a big part of the state formula, we're projecting that we will have increased state revenue this year. You'll notice when we talk about increase in enrollment, we refer to a number of 145.5 FTE. A little bit different than what Mr. Kane's number is. I think his is 166.
Right.
The difference is, from a funding perspective, ours, his are actual numbers of our enrollment. Ours are talking about the enrollment that's funded. And the enrollment that's funded does not include pre-kindergarten students, as well as a few other categories of students. So that's the difference there, is that I believe it's pre-kindergarten and part-time students. And there's a couple of other smaller categories of students that are not included for funding purposes. So that's why we're up 145 for funding purposes, but 166 for actual enrollment. So if we...
Mr. Hartlove, can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
So we're at 3.5 million, and I understand this is, you know, we're continually trying to refine this until the numbers become final a couple of months down the road. But this 3.5 million was 4-point-something?
Yeah.
The last time we looked at it?
We were looking at a, I believe it was a 3.7% increase. And I think it was above 4 million. Probably 4.5 million was the correct number. And we didn't have as much information as far as, we didn't have the wealth information that Dr. Lockard was speaking to earlier. We also have, we started looking at the CPI that last year's numbers were based upon, and we looked at kind of the recent CPI. We don't know what the CPI that they're going to use in the formula is yet. But with that, we thought this is probably a good time to make sure, as I talked about iterations of the budget. It's a good time, if we have information that leads us to believe that we may have been a little bit on the high side, let's bring that down a little bit. We will have, the governor's budget is due out in the next week or so. I think it's the 15th. After that, you know, once we get that, we'll kind of digest it. And within the next two weeks, we'll have a pretty good idea what our, at least preliminary state revenue will be. And we'll be able to revise that number. Maybe at our first hearing, we can talk about that updated information.
Okay.
So that's kind of the process that we do, is each iteration, we try to improve the numbers. And I talked about the enrollment. The good news here is also that we have a, we had a, 12 of the last 13 years, we've been down in enrollment. So this is my reason for being more optimistic about our budget going forward, is that enrollment is an important part of our funding. And it looks like we've bottomed out and maybe are starting to move in the right direction. All right. So the other side of the ledger is expenditures. And as I stated earlier, our enrollment, our revenue is up $9,666,080. That's a 2.88% increase in revenue. And our expenditures, we have a balanced budget, so our expenditures are going up by the same amount. We'll talk about the general operating. Last, let's talk about the other items first. Employee health costs are, right now, we're looking at a 2.86% increase. That's about $1.2 million. For context, last year, that number increased by 4%. So that's a, this is a favorable number for us this year. Retiree health costs typically run 4% to 5%. This year, we're looking at a 3.86% increase. So another favorable number for us that helps us to balance the budget. Student transportation costs. What is included here is the PVA for, per-vehicle allotment for the buses that contractors have, that they own. It's basically like a depreciation for those buses. And as older buses go off schedule and are replaced, that PVA, it goes up with the newer buses. There's a factor in the formula for salary, for driver and assistant salary, for maintenance, for, there's a factor for administrative fee, lift fee. And all those items together total $717,000, and equate to a 3.53% increase. And then the real good news item in here, and I think it was a couple of meetings ago where we, where the board approved utility rates for both natural gas and electricity. I think natural gas for three years, electricity for five years. Because of those favorable rates, we're saving almost $117,000 in the upcoming budget. And that's a 1.83% decrease in costs there. Then we, Superintendent talked a little bit about new positions. We'll talk about those in a moment. But we were including $707,000 to address some of the, some new positions that fit into our strategic plan. Now, I kind of skipped over general operating. General operating is the largest item up there. It's an increase of 2.65% or a little less than $7 million. The largest item in there is employee raises. And as the footnote states, we're, salaries will actually be determined through the negotiations process that are ongoing. I can't say much more than we have factored in dollars for an increase for staffing. And that's the largest number in general operating. Also, what's included in general operating is hiring turnover, hourly funds, funds for substitutes, other insurances, general liability, fire, vehicle insurance, all of our contracted services, other than the bus contractors, supplies and materials, pretty much everything else that wasn't detailed out. And again, this is a number that, when we put our five-year plan together, we estimated 3%. So this is a little bit lower. So pretty much all good news on our expenditures right now, that they're coming in a favorable manner.
In fact, these are all better than the last round, right? With the exception of transportation costs.
Correct. And I believe what's driving the transportation costs is the PV. I think we have quite a few vehicles cycling off this year, which would cause this year to be a little bit higher than years where less vehicles cycle off. So now let's talk about those positions and the strategic plan. Our budget is aligned to the, Superintendent's Proposed Budget is aligned to the strategic plan. And the largest ticket item in the budget, and you know, certainly very important item, we heard it through the town halls, is competitive salaries. And they continue to be a priority focus. And as I said earlier, our collective bargaining is currently underway. So we're not going to say much more about it other than it's the first item that we've put up here because it is a high priority item. Next, we have the special education resource teachers that the Superintendent referred to in his opening remarks. They support Pillar One, provide multiple pathway opportunities for student success. The common thread in the town hall meetings and in meetings with staff is really was compensation in special education. They kind of came up as high areas of high need. And I do think there's a lot of thought put into these positions, being in the system, being included in the Superintendent's budget. It's going along with a staffing plan that, as Superintendent mentioned, Mr. Anderson and Mr. Shockney are both working on. So it's going in a structured manner. We're not just, you know, putting positions in to try to fill a need. We're really doing it in a very strategic manner. And then the other two positions, so that was six. The other two positions are under Pillar, aligned to Pillar Four, establish safe, secure, healthy, and modern learning environments. They are a school psychologist, and it's included in the budget for consideration to meet growing mental health needs of students. And then we also have quite a few needs in the technology area. So we're including one-on-site technician for technology support in schools. And that's another common thread with these, with all the positions. They're school-based, they're student-based, student-centered. They're all about services to students and at schools. So that is a very brief summary of the Superintendent's Proposed Operating Budget. And what I would say is, you know, in my time here, this is probably one of the better starting places that we've been with regards to the operating budget. There are no position reductions, there are no other reductions. There may be some realignments of dollars, but nothing is being reduced just to balance the budget. We're addressing compensation. We're also making some iterative steps towards improving the system through the strategic plan. So it's, I believe it's a good starting point for our budget. So with that, talk about the next steps. I talked about it being an iterative process. Two weeks from tonight, in this boardroom, at 7:00, we will have an operating budget hearing. Public is welcome and encouraged to come out and kind of after you've absorbed the budget, to kind of have, let us know your, give us feedback of what your thoughts of the budget are. Have another hearing on the 5th. That's two weeks after the hearing on the 22nd. February 5th at 6:00, we'll have an operating budget hearing. And then following that hearing, we will have a board work session on the operating budget. Again, it's in the same room. And then on the 12th, at our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting, the board will adopt your budget request that then goes to the county. And there's more steps, but these are kind of the steps that lead up to the next big step, which is your requested budget. Before I open it up for questions, I did want to note a couple of additional pieces of information that we have. First of all, the presentation that I've gone over tonight is going to be, is posted on our website. So if you want to review the presentation, it's out there. Our... Our entire budget book is now out on the website as well for review. We have a new item, well, actually, before I talk about that, we have our, our citizen's guide to the budget, which is out there, this is kind of for folks who want to be involved in the budget, and kind of want to have a little bit of information about background and how our process works, and some useful information to kind of participate, that's available on our website, it's also, there are copies on the back table. And then we have a new item this year, that is a operating budget summary page, and it takes, does a nice job of, just for someone who doesn't want to read the entire book and wants, but wants to be involved, it's a one-pager that summarizes the entire.
Chris, yeah, and I want to say thanks to Drew Sexton, Kari Gaddis, a couple others who helped put this together. It's a very nice communication piece that highlights our focus of this budget, how it's connected to the strategic plan, a big 30,000-foot look at revenues, and some additional information if folks are interested in finding more. So thank you, Drew, and others who helped put that together.
And with that, I would open to questions.
I have one question.
Sure.
And I'm not raining on your parade, but it is, it is nice to sit here and hear positive stuff, and, and a budget that's pleasant to talk about. But one of the things I was wondering if, if either you or Superintendent could touch on, you know, we say there's no cuts, but in reality, there are. You're doing a lot of trimming with zero budgeting and central office, in other words, there's a reason, that's part of the reason why we can be so positive, is because there are, are a lot of cost savings measures going on and happening that aren't reflected in this presentation.
You, you are correct. What I've asked folks to do, and Chris and his team have done a great job of helping our departments sort of shepherd through this process, is instead of us saying, we're going to be cutting programs, or we're going to be cutting human resources, or we're going to be cutting, you know, things that are happening, that, I mean, everything we do impacts kids and schools, but what we've asked our, our folks to do, and, you know, even folks in our schools, is take a look at your existing budgets, and let's, it's time to start from the beginning. Instead of saying, what did we do last year, and add on, it was time to say, let's take a look at the whole thing again, and make sure that what we're doing is meaningful, impactful, supporting what we're trying to accomplish. And so, to your point, Mr. Kyler, yes, we have reprioritized some things, we have found some efficiencies, and this is also, I think, a result of some hard work folks are doing to find better deals, and find more efficient ways of doing things, and reexamine how we're doing business, and could we, could we be more efficient and save more dollars? And it's a difficult process, because nobody wants, I mean, you know, naturally, it's hard to let go of anything you've done, but also to say, hey, maybe there's something I could give back to the bottom line to help is even harder sometimes. So, so, you know, without making this meeting go too much longer, I couldn't possibly start to get into everything that, that's involved there, but it is a lot of work on behalf of staff, and a lot of work to, to help contribute. So yes, while there are efficiencies we're finding, and some things, you know, you might, we might be doing less of, we're not doing impactful systemic cuts.
Right.
That, that, you know, that we've done in the past.
And I don't want to, I didn't want to mislead anyone, we're always looking to be more efficient, and the difference between what we're doing now and what we were doing in the past is, is we were making reductions to keep ourselves afloat. What we did, what we did this year was really kind of part of the strategic plan, we said, okay, let's look at what we're doing, and it's all good stuff, but how aligned to the strategic plan is it? And if it's a, if we're not doing the highest priority items, but we're doing some of the lower priority items, maybe we need to shift some of the dollars from the lower priority items, not that, not that they were bad things, they were just things that were not the, you know, the focus of the school system right now. So we decided to make some tough decisions and move some of those dollars, those dollars up, because we know we're not just going to get the, all the additional dollars we need, we need to use the dollars we have as efficiently as we can, as we can. So.
Yeah, and I'd like to follow up on that, in terms of, you know, we say that we have $700,000 built in for strategic plan initiatives, and that's really the eight positions that we were talking about, right? The school psychologists, but there's so much more going on that our strategic plan initiatives, we're just not spending additional dollars on them, we're reallocating, we're doing all of this work within the system to find the efficiencies and direct those resource efforts in much more impactful ways. And so, that's why I don't want people to think that, okay, well, the only strategic plan initiatives that we're doing are these eight positions, there's a lot more going on behind the scenes, and we know that some of these efficiencies that, that you found, you know, they've gone towards purchasing the data dashboards, and they've got, there's a lot of different things that are happening, all the work with the performance academies, and we're just redirecting resources, and those are all strategic plan initiatives, they're just not additional dollars that are being spent on them. It's, it's internal resource efforts that are being focused in different ways. So I want to thank everyone for all that work, because there's a lot going on.
And it's a system-wide, where it's no, it's not any one person, it's a system-wide work initiative, and people have to, they kind of have to come to the table and be a little bit vulnerable, because they have to sit there and say, okay, well, let me look at my budget, and not, you know, people tend to get, you know, kind of defensive, they don't want, you know, but, you know, they, everyone was very cooperative and came to the table, and, and every, everyone has contributed in some way.
And the one thing I wanted to say, as long as Dick and I had worked for the Board of Education, we have never seen anything like zero-based budgeting before, because we would buy, purchase, we were in charge of purchasing for our departments, and that, this has never come up as an initiative, and I want to thank you, because this has really been an eye-opening experience, and, and I want to thank everybody for the hard work, because this was just an absolute wonderful activity for that everybody, that everybody participated in.
Right, it's coming together really well, but it's the result of a lot of activity that led up to this, all the work with the commissioners, with coming together, up with a joint five-year budget that we could live with, it was all of the town hall meetings and the feedback that you've gotten, all the zero-based budgeting that's going on, I mean, there's a, a lot of work that's gotten us to this point.
Absolutely, I mean, that's why I led with that, we talked about compensation as a goal of the, of the boards for the last couple of years, and that, absolutely you see that here. The positions, we gathered all that feedback, so maybe that's the only thing that's technically new at this point, although it's not new, those were all things we've talked about, it was just what, what would I perhaps recommend for your consideration? But everything else, the work that you just mentioned, the work with the departments and the schools, the work with the commissioners, the work with the community, was all in an effort to get us to this point, to have all that included. So, so I've been trying, and we've been trying, and I think the conversations have been, have been good, to sort of lead to this point. So, here we are.
I just want to say thank you. This really, as Marsha alluded to, looks good, this is positive, this is the attitude we want in this county, that the boards work together, the budgets can come together, and we get rid of that anxiety of fighting that we did for I don't know how many years with the commissioners, with the school board or whatever. It changes the whole attitude of the county, and, thank you. And Chris, I know you put a lot into it, I hold you responsible.
Oh.
Anyway. My barometer back here is sitting there, and he's not any emotion, so I know this is a good budget.
I saw him write down something.
He hasn't taken his coat off. I don't think, I don't know if he's going to run away or what.
Okay, so, board members, if we don't have any more comments, we can go on to the quick CIP update, is that?
Thank you, thank you, Chris, thank you, board members. As I said, next we want to provide a status of the FY21 CIP request. You approved your annual CIP request in October and submitted to the state and county. In the past, you didn't receive an update until about May, when we brought you final approval. So this past year, we committed to bringing regular updates on the status of the FY21 CIP request at each monthly meeting when we, when we're discussing the operating budget as well. So, we have just a couple of brief slides, this will provide a status update at both the state and county level, and we'll bring, like we said, a similar update at each meeting until the final budgets are approved. Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Dr. Lockard. And so we'll fill in the blanks, hopefully, between what happens in October when you submit your CIP, and when we bring you those project totals with your operating categories in, in May. And the good news is, at this stage, we're still pretty early in both the state and local process. You submitted your CIP, as you know, in October, it goes to the state and to the county. The state process begins at something we always call the IAC, which stands for the Inter-Agency Commission on School Construction, and prior to the General Assembly, their staff makes some recommendations up to a level of 75% of anticipated statewide capital funding. The IAC itself makes decision or votes on that 75% proposed level, and then that process is part of the General Assembly's capital budget process from there to 100%, and so we don't get a final answer until the state, until the General Assembly approves the capital state budget. At the local level, it goes to the county staff, and Mr. Zaleski, rather dapper, addressed Mr. Zaleski and his folks, go through various iterations, Q and A with, with our folks, and my guess would be maybe next week or the week after, Ted will present his, his staff recommendations to the Board of Commissioners, and that's where they'll start to begin to look at what, what they believe they can fund in your request, and so that hasn't even started yet, that's how early we are in the local process. That slide repeats, that's not an illusion, we'll, we'll take that out in the publisher, in the version that stays on the website. So, again, at the state process, I covered this a little bit, we're at the 75% level, at that level, for us, the IAC has voted on $9 million total, and they've recognized the Career and Tech project. And we do a lot of staff-to-staff work with them, they ask for data and numbers, and based on our analyses, which they're supporting, we also share that, that kind of information with Ted and his folks. $9 million as a whole for the Career and Tech project is a number that we believe is sufficient state cash flow per year to get, get the project from start to finish. So in terms of Career and Tech, even at 75% level, that's, that's good news for us. Where it's perhaps less good news is that it doesn't, at that level, leave anything left for any other project. And so, Dr. Lockard took a few of us with him back on December 12th to the IAC, when they have their opportunity for each county board to appeal, he made his appeal and requested specifically that they allocate by the end of the process sufficient funding for Career and Tech, but also sufficient funding for the Spring Garden HVAC project. And we sort of worked with him to form his testimony around the fact that we looked at 25 years of state funding history, and we recognized that over time, for many years recently, we haven't built a lot, it's been mostly systems, and they've been able to participate in more than one system, but when you look back even to Mount Arrie Middle, and anytime we've done a major project before that, and it sort of makes common sense, when you have a major project, they have less funding to do, to do other systems at the same time. And so he made the appeal for our, for your top priority system, which is Spring Garden HVAC. Now we have to wait for the rest of the General Assembly to unfold and see what the final capital number will be there. There's another kind of legislative topic, or I hate to use the word wildcard, but unknown sitting out there, which is the promise that in this General Assembly, the state will finally pass legislation to move, statewide move us ahead of the 280 million statewide capital mark we've been at for the last couple of years, and allocate additional capital funding. It, it looks like to, to project, and looking at bills that have come up last year and passed in part but not whole, that that would be another process. So there'll be the traditional process that you're somewhat familiar with, that we talk about all the time, and there'll be a new process where a different funding stream is allocated through a different source, but still with IAC approval. So there, there's another sort of legislative question beyond the traditional capital process hanging out there and waiting for the General Assembly to, to conclude. And then at the, at the county level, once we, once we submit your plant, your plan, or your request and plan across the street, there's, there's a lot of Q and A, a lot of back and forth on what's the most recent data you have, and then Mr. Zaleski and his folks work to build what they believe they can afford, you can afford, and get that to the commissioner sometime probably in middle or late January, and they began their discussions about all the capital needs of the county, and where we as a school system fit into that. I did want to bring to your attention, there was an initial question that came up from Mr. Zaleski and his folks of, and I want to put a lot of caveats on this as I go through these, but if there was funding capacity locally, would we want the county to forward fund some systems projects, some roofs, some HVACs? That does not mean, I do not want anyone to believe I just said Ted has committed to funding, forward funding system projects, they're just asking the question, if, if local revenue looked as such that it could work out, would, would the school system be interested in us forward funding some systems? And I suspect part of the rationale in them even asking that question is they're looking at what's, what's being allocated or been allocated thus far at the state level, and saying, as long as Career and Tech's there, and East Middle's coming too, the state presumably will be able to participate in fewer systems at the same time as they've been able to over the last decade. So that's a big if, but, but the question was asked. And so, you know, just in the staff conversations, our initial response is what we called a qualified no, and, and what I would say is, our thinking behind that is, there's a little bit of uncertainty. The IAC has been through some legislative and structural changes, they have a slightly different process than in the past, we're trying to work out, get a feel for that, Dr. Lockard was down there appealing, it would be nice to have a better sense of where they ultimately end up. And then we also have the, the possibility of other legislation and more state capital funding than in the past, still waiting to be decided. So there's kind of too big, we'd like to sort of feel out more of where we'll be with the state. And then secondly, based on our understanding of the state regulations on school construction, unlike a capacity project, if a county forward funds a system project, then the state doesn't later do a reimbursement, that, that becomes a fully funded, not just a forward funded, but at that point, a fully funded local project, fully funded by the local, not, not, not where there's going to be some state reimbursement. And so, in, in that sense, you know, that would, there would have to be sort of a broader level view discussion about, does that make sense or not? How critical is this project? Where would we, where would we want to fit that in? And so, you know, when I say, you know, our view of it would be a qualified no, that doesn't mean that that was an absolute forever no, but especially for FY21, you know, if it were our decision, we would say it's probably a good time to sort of feel out the state process too, see what kind of information Ted and staff present, and what kind of discussions they have at the county, and then go from there. But certainly, we'd love to hear your, your input on, on that question, and on the bigger picture as a whole as well. So hopefully, some of that explained the two processes, and be happy to try to answer any questions I can as well.
I think that was really helpful to understand that process and how it plays out, and, and also, the, the question about the forward funding, I mean, I, I agree with the qualified no, at least if I'm understanding this correctly, is you said that if we forward fund some of those, then we lose the 59%.
For systems, that's.
For systems, so defined as roofs and HVACs.
Right, building systems. So for a capacity project, a new school or a modernized school, the state, if you qualify, you know, if they would participate, you can forward fund locally, and they ultimately can reimburse or will reimburse, but for systems, that's not true. For roofs, HVACs, I'm trying to think of what a different system would be, but those are, you know, those are the two big ones.
Okay, which they typically would, the state contribution would be 59% on those, so do we be forfeiting.
Right.
Of eligible, right?
Of what they would participate in, yeah, that's what we would forfeit over, you know, over time for however many projects we forward fund.
Right.
Or they forward fund. But at some point, and you may feel differently today, and I understand that, but at some point, from our perspective, that may make more sense, because you, you know, if you could get to roofs or HVACs earlier, oftentimes, there's questions of sequencing a roof at one school with the HVAC project out of school, it, it may make sense now or in the future to do that, but for this year, qualified no is not the clearest term in the world, but that's what, that's what I came up with for tonight. I would prefer to be in a wait-and-see for fiscal year '21.
Okay. Board members, do you agree with that? I think that makes sense, I mean, we don't want to just give up on state dollars that they, that we would expect them to put in.
Still a lot to learn at the state level through this process here in the next several months, so.
Correct.
I would agree.
And at the local level, they don't punish us, so they, first bullet, I think they dedicate by their policy a portion of local income tax towards our capital needs, and that doesn't, they don't take that away and say, well, if you didn't. well, if you didn't run it this year, then you can never have it. So, there's not a, at least in my opinion, there's not a risk to taking a wait-and-see approach, at least for one fiscal year.
Okay. Are there other projects outside of, so, so the systems projects, I don't think it makes sense to, to forward fund those because of that situation, but are there other projects that you could, so, if there's funding capacity, right, that's the, the question from the commissioners and from Ted, are there other projects that we would want to fund?
Well, there are capital project accounts that are local only, and so, we could engage in some conversation about those going forward, and if it makes sense. But once they commit the funds to those projects, I guess it's not that it could never be moved to a different project, but then it's allocated, and we would generally begin work in those areas, so. I mean, they work hard to fund our locally-only funded projects as well. I guess, I guess what I would say is, in the big picture of all of that, I would take a wait-and-see approach for '21, and maybe relook at, at all of those moving parts for, for '22 and beyond.
Okay, so that should be part of our discussion as part of the next CIP development?
Yeah, for me, yes, because we will have, I believe, and, and Mr. Kyler and Mrs. Herbert sit on the MAVE Legislative Committee, and so, they've been hearing the conversations around the capital part of this as well. But I think we'll have a tremendous amount of more state clarity at the end of this General Assembly than we've had for a couple of years. And I do think the other funding source bill will pass too, and I could prognost, well, they hear it. I mean, we think we know what that, we, we don't know what the final language of the bill will be, but we think we have a clear picture of what the additional capital funding source from the state's going to look like in the future.
Speaking of that, and some of the stuff they had talked about down there Monday, do you feel like you need anything from us for Career and Tech, or from East Middle, to, to make sure we're maximizing our opportunity to get money from the state? Or, and Career and Tech, to me, it seems like we're far enough along there, I think we're pretty safe. East Middle, it just scares me with anavalous.
Right, so, yeah. And I would agree, Mr. Kyler, on Career and Tech, this is an annual process, and we'll do this every year for four years, but once the state commits in year one and, and looks at our cash flow or draw schedule analysis, they would be hard-pressed to pull out in a subsequent year when we're under construction. So, I think Career and Tech is, is in the pipeline and underway. What that means when you look at some of those numbers is, okay, so, not, it's, for me at least, it's not at all an if, but, but then it becomes more of a when for East Middle. Because if, if they're maxing out at nine, or 10, or 11, or 12 million a year, let's say, then there's not enough cash flow for those two systems in the traditional CIP method on the timeline that's earliest. That doesn't mean East Middle in any way, doesn't mean there's a problem with East Middle being approved or happening. It becomes a, a matter of, of when and how do, do you get the capital money? That's why the additional bill, the additional funding source that we've been talking about as a state at the MAVE meetings becomes very, very important, very important, to keep East Middle on the earliest possible timeline that you've been projecting. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so, and when you're saying, we're okay for now, and.
Yeah.
Hopefully, a couple of months, we'll know.
Right. We don't have any concern that the state won't approve an East Middle project when you get it to the stage where it goes to them. It's just now a matter of taking all these parts and figuring out how to get the state funding we need to work with their funding on the earliest possible timeline to make, to make it happen. And you asked earlier, I think, about the Spring Garden HVAC, and why that, one of you did, I believe, when Jim, I'm sorry, Dr. Dorsey, asked when Mr. Marx was at the podium, why in the language of the construction report did it move back? That's not new or foreign to us, but it is kind of to the board, because for the last several years, we've basically only been requesting systems from the state, roofs, HVACs from the state, not major construction. And when that's all you're asking for, which is much in the grant, you know, in the grand scheme of what they're funding, you get a pretty clear sense right away, even at 75% they've recognized the project and they're going to fund it, then we can bring to you in the spring of the year before construction, bid documents early, and purchase the long lead equipment early, so that when we hit summer and school's out, we can work on those projects right away. In this case, they haven't recognized Spring Garden yet, and, and that puts us on a timeline where we couldn't get that early jump. So, kind of like with East Middle, doesn't mean they're going to change and not recognize or honor Spring Garden, it just becomes a matter of when we could then move it forward. So, for instance, let's say that by the time the General Assembly ends, and they're at 100, 100% of the capital money, and they were so enamored by Dr. Lockard and his testimony that they say, you know what, we need to give the Carroll County Public Schools two more million dollars to make, and it probably isn't even that much, but whatever it would be, to make that project go now, we still wouldn't be able to stay on the timeline of the summer, because it's probably maybe six weeks for bid, not if that's right, Ray, and then 16 weeks or so of ordering the long lead equipment. And so, that just, the fact that they didn't recognize it at the 75% level, regardless of whether they recognize it this year, it puts us out of that June 20 timeline, it moves us to a June 21 timeline.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. All right, so that concludes Section 8. We'll move on to unfinished business and new business. And we, on 7:00 PM on Wednesday, January 22nd, 2020, we have the FY21 operating budget here, hearing here in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street. And at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, February 5th, 2020, we have the operating budget hearing followed by a board work session on that operating budget here in the boardroom as well, 125 North Court Street. And at 5:00 PM on Wednesday, February 12th, 2020, we have our next board meeting with citizen participation here in the boardroom. So, those are the upcoming meetings. Board members, do we have any other unfinished business that we wanted to bring up at this time?
I just want to see if we can look into the requirements of getting into Career and Tech, Tech Center, especially with us looking into remodeling it and bringing up, making it a little bigger. I just want to see if we can look into that, kind of reevaluate that a little bit better.
Okay. And just as a little bit of background, this was something that came up at the CCEA Legislative Breakfast. Some folks were talking about the rubric for students being able to get into Career and Tech, and Commissioner Weaver, I know you've made some comments and had questions about that in the past as well. And I think that we can probably follow up with that offline and see if maybe it makes sense to put it as an agenda item on the next board meeting, or, or one shortly thereafter?
Or a work session opportunity.
Okay, excellent. Is that okay, Ms.? Okay, great. Board members, any other unfinished business? Okay, before I call for the motion to adjourn, I just want to remind board members that we will be going back into closed after this, and, so, we're not quite done yet, but with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Move by Ms. Herbert. Second by Ms. Pataglio. All those in favor? Passes unanimously, thank you very much, everyone, and have a great evening and the rest of your week.
Thank you, John.
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 Thank you, John.